This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
So, welcome. This begins the process for the 2020 operating budget. We've included the capital portion through the budget process a few weeks ago. And this is the operating budget. So, this is where we talk about the budgets that fund all of our operating departments, all the activities that we do. What we're going to do tonight, so this is again the very beginning of the process. Tonight Jay's going to give us an overview of kind of the financial position that we are looking at and some of the estimates and projections as we go into this budget process. We'll also talk about the calendar and the process for going through this fall to adopt a budget. And then we'll look to you for some policy level and feedback and what you might have and kind of where we're at, you know, in the process. So, again, this is the beginning of the process. We are staff, we've been meeting with the senior staff to talk about the situation. You're going to learn tonight that we have a gap. The revenues are not anticipated to cover the expenses in 2021. By law and rule and practice, the city manager will produce a balanced budget for you to review. So, as a senior staff, we've been meeting and talking about how to accomplish that. The staff has been submitting their recommendations for their needs for our service to continue and that's all being evaluated as we put together a balanced budget for you. But at this point, it's for you to receive the overview and kind of bigger picture and be aware of where we're at and some of the challenges that we're facing, as well as perhaps to provide some overview or high-level perspectives or feedback for me as your city manager as I develop that balanced budget for you that we've created this fall. So, with that, Jay, I'll turn the review.
Joe, I just want to spend a few minutes particularly, you know, some of this will be a review for council members who've been through a budget or more. We do have a couple of new council members, so just kind of want to put things in a little bit of a big-picture perspective. So, when we, and I'm going to be talking primarily about the general fund tonight, which is the primary fund that is supported by the property tax levy. The health department and the library are also supported by the property tax levy, but the biggest share of the property tax levy goes into the general fund. So, if we look at the general fund, operating expenditures, including debt service, you can see that the biggest piece of the pie is going to the police department. The second biggest piece of the pie is going for, towards what we call non-departmental, but the biggest piece that's in non-departmental is debt service. And that's around $9 million. We've also got community services, which are the third-largest piece, and then fire and rescue is the next largest. Then you can see all sorts of different departments over here with varying levels of pieces of the pie. Finance department, administrative services, community development, engineering, human resources, and the city attorney's office. So, by far and away, the four largest pieces of this pie are community services, non-departmental, primarily debt service, fire and rescue, and the police department. So, if we just look at the general fund operating expenditures, so now I strip the debt service out, you know, debt service is set. We know that's going to be, we can't cut debt or, you know, the amount of money going to debt service without some serious repercussions. So, if we just strip that all out, then what we see is that really the three largest departments that are within the general fund, the police department represents 33.7% of the general fund operating expenditures. Fire department represents 21.6%, so between police and fire, we're at about 55-56%, so more than half of the general fund budget. Then community services represents 22% of the budget. So, between all three of those, you know, we're looking at about close to 75%. Close to three-quarters of the budget is made up of, for the operating budget, is made up with three departments: community services, fire and rescue, and police. And then again, all these other departments make up much smaller portions of the general fund operating budget.
So, what's the non-departmental of that one?
Non-departmental, there's some transfers within non-departmental. That's probably the, and then we have our subsidies to community television and trying to think of what the other subsidy is in there. And I believe I did include the transfers to transit, to hubs, to parking, to fare-back pool within that as well. So, if we break that general fund budget apart just a little bit differently, so rather than breaking it down by department, we break it down by the type of expenditures, we can see that personal services accounts for about 80% of our general fund budget. So, we're in the service business and the business that we're in requires that we have people. It still takes a person to drive a snowplow. It still takes a person to operate a mower. It takes people to answer phones and even though we're moving transactions electronically and trying to allow residents and others to interact with us without, you know, 24 hours a day when somebody isn't there, we're still in the people business. The police department requires officers out on the street. The fire department requires paramedics within the ambulances. So, 80% of our cost is comprised of personal services. About 13% is contractual services. And then you can see supplies and materials, utilities, fixed charges, and contributions and other payments make up really pretty small amounts of our operating budget. So, it's very difficult to affect the operating budget significantly without resulting in changes to personnel or personal services. So, if we take a look at the 2020 operating budget, and this is where I get out my crystal ball and take a look at where I think some things are going. On the revenue side of the equation, our building permit revenue is up, so I think that our revenue estimate for 2020 will be up probably about $95,000. Charges for services are going down. Primary driver of that is ambulance billing. I'm not sure if we just had a revenue estimate that was going to be overly aggressive, but the last two years, we've been running $2 million to maybe $2.1 million in revenue and our budgeted number is $2.3 million. So, it's probably time to make an adjustment to that. Miscellaneous revenue, we think is going to increase about $45,000. Net overall change, negative $100,000 for non-property tax revenue. One thing that isn't in here are transportation aids. The total state budget for transportation aids increased, but that's a formula-driven allocation. And even though the total pot of money increased, there's no guarantee that our share of that is going to go up. And so, until we get that, you know, these numbers will continue to get revised as we move forward. On the expenditure side, the expenditure changes. Wages and wage-driven fringe benefits, looking at an increase of about $775,000. This includes cost of living adjustment. This includes step increases. And it includes some offset for turnover savings due to employees leaving employment with the city and being replaced with employees that are at a lower step within the pay scale. Health insurance, looking at a net increase of about $225,000. So, that includes a rate increase, which we have a contract that sets that maximum at 4%. And also some savings from employees changing health plans. Once again, when new employees come in, sometimes they take a different health plan than the former employee. When we budget vacant positions, we always budget family plans. Sometimes when they come in, they have a single plan or, so those types of turnover savings are offsetting some of that increase.
Jay, can I just double-check? These are the increased amounts?
Yes.
But we haven't settled for 2020 yet.
Well, we have an estimate based upon the parameters that you provided for those negotiations. We have to budget that number and we may have settlements before we're presenting a budget to you. We may not have settlements.
Yep.
Is the health insurance for $225,000 a 4%?
It's a 4% increase.
Does it usually go up against the max?
Oh, it's varied. I mean, you know.
It'll come in, I mean, that's the worst-case scenario, kind of early in the process.
Right. Yeah. So, all of these numbers are going to get refined as we go through the process, but, you know, I think that it's important, you know, for council to know where we think this is going to end. City facility rentals going up by about $190,000. Transit operating assistance, increase of about $20,000. Software licensing and police records for the spillman software is going to generate an increase of about $75,000. We're actually looking at some savings on utility costs for gas, electric, and water, which will save about $55,000. Medical supplies for the ambulances and the fire department, increase of $30,000. Repair parts and supplies, increase of $20,000. Asphalt, which is by humanist materials, actually a cost decrease, $30,000. Road salt, increase of $30,000. Elections, as council, members of council who have been on for a little while probably recall, during presidential and gubernatorial election years, the budget for elections increases because we have more elections and there are larger elections. We need to bring on more poll workers. And then in non-gubernatorial and non-presidential years, the elections budget decreases and we use those funds for one-time service modifications. And then it just keeps going, going up and down. So, elections, we're looking at an increase of about $270,000. And then we eliminate the one-time service modifications from last year. So, on the expenditure side, we're looking at increases of about $1.39 million. And again, these numbers will continue to get refined as we move through the process.
So, Jake, does the increase to the election services, is that projecting any changes to election services?
No.
Are you serious?
No, just, I mean, again, the change is just associated with the presidential election year.
But the last, it's no change to the services versus the 2016 election?
No. Carrie's nodding her head, no. So, Jake, Gary?
I know we, I'm pretty much like paying for these, I'm sure, first, is that, is that you have, is that a payment?
I don't, that would have affected, that would have affected this year's budget as well, so.
That should be included.
Yeah, it would have already been built in.
That should be built in.
Yep.
It's not a different.
Well, it would have been built into the 2019, it's already in the 2019 budget, so that becomes the base. So, it's not a change from the 2019.
Other than you have more election workers that are at a higher wage rate. Yeah, that's why.
Yeah.
Way more, way more election workers.
Sorry if I missed it, but you have a decrease in the by-two-minute schedule?
Yeah.
What was that, remember that?
Primarily, it's, you know, by-two-minute schedule, but it's Dave's, but then it's controlling the base and, you know, controlling the prices down.
It's not that we're doing less by-two minutes, it's just the cost.
No, this isn't, this wouldn't be Dave's by-two minutes, this is actually Jeff's by-two minutes.
We're not doing anything wrong.
A few years ago, when oil prices were up a lot, that number was going up, oil prices were going down, and we were, so, yeah, we were patching less.
Yeah, and, I mean, that's an important point that Andrew brings up and that, you know, I didn't mention is, you know, all of these are assuming current service levels. We're not cutting, reducing, really changing anything.
Let me emphasize that. So, this is the changes that we've been all about to continue through everything that we've done, you know, in the past. So, Kate, just reflect your impression a little bit. There will be service modifications or requests that you're evaluating, that I'm evaluating and staff is evaluating, that may take some of these up or down in terms of what the final budget would be. This just gives you a sense that if we did everything the way we did in the past going forward, these are the numbers that we expect for the future.
So, then, without any levy increase, we've got a deficit of about $1.49 million. The net new construction for this coming budget year is 1.89%, which generates the maximum levy increase of $555,000 for the City of Eau Claire, which leaves us a net deficit of $935,000. So, I don't want anybody to panic at this point. I, in my experience, I've started out with deficits in that range before and were able to get that gap closed or substantially closed. But nevertheless, it is a, you know, it is a big deficit at this point in time that we're looking at. To give some historical perspective, at these same meetings back in 2017, '18, and '19, these were the deficits that we were looking at. So, about $195,000 in '17, 390 in '18, and 307 last year. So, you know, the $900-some-odd thousand is higher than we've been experiencing the last several years, but it's not unusual at this point in the process to be based upon kind of these 10,000-foot projections to be having a deficit. So, in moving forward from this point, some of the, I guess, budget strategy and priorities that we're going to be using, city manager's going to be using as he develops his recommended budget. Unless we hear differently, we're going to assume that the city council is okay with increasing the property tax levy by 1.89%, which is the maximum that we're allowed under levy limits for net new construction. One of the priorities is to maintain fair and equitable wages. And I know the city council has had some discussion about that for represented employees, but we also feel that it's important to maintain that equity across the organization and to treat the non-represented employees equally, so we don't start creating haves and have-nots within the organization. Very important to maintain adequate equipment and training for our employees, that, you know, they are our most important resource and we depend upon them every day to provide services that the public depends on. And lastly, and this, we were just talking about this a little bit, that to preserve current programs and services consistent with the draft strategic plan. So, unless we hear differently from the city council, and we'll get to the next slide in a second, but we're going to assume going into this that there is an emphasis on preserving our current programs and services. And we'll take things in that direction.
Will we be approving the strategic plan for the budget this time?
I would hope so, yes.
How kind of thing.
The, I can say yes. We'll find, the challenge has been to find space where we can have work sessions that aren't filled with other things, but we need to circle back and do this and go through that, so.
It's important to me that we have, that my wife's support for budgets, that we can be making sure that we're being informed as we're going through the budget process.
Understood.
So, along those lines, and this is, oh, go ahead. No worries.
So, the levy increase of 1.35%, was it?
Yes.
Is that, how does that compare to the levy increases in the last year?
It is lower than last year's, but last year we were, you know, was based upon really record construction. Last year with the closure of Kid, we were at, I think, about 2.5%. Prior years, 2018 and 2017, I believe it's higher than those years. I mean, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good number.
But this is, the estimated budget or increase is kind of, I wouldn't say conservative, but it's, you're assuming most of those are kind of the highest they possibly will be. And with this increase, you're also assuming the lowest potentially. So, it's possible that the increase comes in at more like 800 and this gives, we have a 2% gap or something, so that we're.
Yeah, I mean, the levy is known.
Right. There's 1.89, that's known.
But the other number could potentially be down.
Other state aids, like you said, the roads, I mean, there's other revenue sources that we have from the state that aren't as known, but the levy is.
That is a known.
That is a known.
And you're absolutely right on the, you know, on the expenditure side, you know, we, those are, you know, a number of those are kind of worst-case scenarios.
Like the health insurance, right? We know that that's the worst it could be, is 4% coming in 3.5%, although, you know, even at 4, that's a pretty good number with the health insurance.
Our overall budget, operating budget is like $54 million, but what is the actual budget?
Yeah, it's in that neighborhood. Sometimes it's difficult because it's hard to figure out exactly, sometimes exactly what to include in that operating budget. So, you know, our transfers to other funds included within that operating budget, so to speak, but it's in that range of 50 to 60 million dollars of total.
Good questions.
So, some of the, I guess, two items that we would like to receive some feedback on, and I think for the most part, I'm done talking and want to start listening, is are there other policy priorities that the city manager should consider in formulating his recommended budget? So, you know, we've laid out, we laid out some, you know, policy priorities that we feel are important treating.
I want to maybe go back to the slides.
Yeah. So, maintaining fair and equitable wages, maintain adequate equipment and training, and preserving current programs and services. So, you know, those are kind of three budget strategies and priorities that we've got in our minds going forward, but are there others that we should be looking at? And then also, are there existing programs or services that the city manager should consider reducing or eliminating? Are there services that we're providing that you don't feel are of value to the residents or visitors to Eau Claire? Because those would be opportunities for us to, you know, take a look at either scaling those back or perhaps eliminating them entirely. And those items can help us close that, close the gap that we're looking at. So, those are the two questions that I want to put out on the table and we'll get feedback on.
Did a hand pop right up? Jill?
Yes.
In the front row.
So, one piece of feedback and then just a question.
Sure.
So, the second dot, are there existing programs or services? When you go online for the budget, is there a place where I could actually kind of see what those are? I mean, I think there is snow removal, nobody's thinking that. So, where would you see listing the programs or services that have costs related to that, you could say?
We can provide you all this.
Okay. So, the other.
Program of services booked from last year would be the place.
Okay. So, the other thing that I would say about priorities, I would like to see either information or I trust that you would see it, but any technology that has cost gains in the future, I would like to see technology invested.
Does that, in your thinking, Jill, does that include employees to support the technology or just the technology itself?
Well, I would see that as the picture that you would be, you know, maybe the technology is really what it is, or the cost of games, you know, if it is, you know, I would trust you see the practical.
As I'm hearing that, that's, you know, technology investments that lower costs or improve efficiencies. And of course, you have to be able to maintain and run that technology. So, technology, you know, doesn't come just in the box. I mean, you have to be able to maintain it and there has to be a net savings or efficiency that comes from whatever that sort of package is. Okay, right, I like that.
Thanks. I have one question and then one comment. Looking at the, I'd be able to listing a program or stuff, but then wondering if we could use Polco to kind of troll the community if there's some service reductions that we're thinking about. And then the second was kind of along the lines of what Jill said in terms of thinking about potential cost gains. I know there's been some conversation about the possibility, and maybe it's not possible this budget here, of a staff person who's role is to do grant writing for the city so that we could have some potential gains in that direction.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Alice, yes, Kate?
So, are renewable energy action plans being completed by the end of the year?
What?
The renewable energy action plan?
Scott?
Yes.
That's the timing of it, yes.
Are we expecting that any sort of operation investment is going to be made in 2020 or out of that plan, or would it probably be 2021?
Most likely the latter. I would try to anticipate some of that in the CIP already.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we've included, yeah, money in the CIP for investments in renewable energy and so probably starting realizing some of those a year after.
That's where we set the stage for the CIP and then can further operational ones.
Also, I, just to move back from that second point, I've been interested, as you know, we are interested in expanding current building services to non-work hours, so that's something that I would be interested in seeing what changed to previous services.
And as we've talked about, you know, there might be some ways of having that be a net, you know, thing with, with changes with, you know, with kind of current dollar and all for, you know, other partners that can help with that. So, we explore some of those.
I was looking at email that, like Kevin from the Third Ward sent about super neighborhood associations in the budget, I wonder where that went in the field.
So, that, so, you know, we're at a point now where we're, the, all the departments are providing to their, basically their needs and they're interested in what should change, you know, from a service perspective, particularly if it requires more resources to do that. And because I think it's important, and last year we spent a firm, I was kind of talking about that gap between the resources we have and the demand for services that are there. So, we're getting those service modification requests. That request from the Third Ward neighborhood association on behalf of all neighborhoods, essentially, it will go into that hopper of things to consider, so.
And, yeah, I think that was a good idea, something out there.
Well, there's a lot of good ideas out there and, and so, um, the, you know, the, the challenge and the opportunity that we have from a staff perspective and presenting to the budget is, is sort of filtering through all those and, uh, and bringing forward, you know, what we think is the best things for, you know, that hopefully aligns relatively closely with what you're doing with this city.
Well, and maybe that's also, um, you know, one of the responses to neighborhoods is that we're moving forward on participatory budgeting. And that's an opportunity potentially for neighborhoods to have more access to funding, um, not on the operating side, but, um, just generally. Um, you know, and I, depending on how it plays out, but that might be a potential avenue for neighborhoods. I think, um, I know last year we had the discussion around someone who would, uh, help facilitate, um, uh, greater levels of engagement in our, in our neighborhoods in our community. Um, and, I mean, that's something that I, I see would be really valuable as a, as a position. Daniel, you and I have to have lots of special, and I know that other council members are kind of focused on what that position would look like. Um, so that's, that's something that I would, I would like to potentially see. Um, and I love the idea of like, is there a grant writing opportunity, um, potentially for our city? I know our police department, our fire department often bring in a lot of grants and maybe there's other possibility for that too. Um, and then the, along the lines of making sure that we make better wages in our community, um, you know, I know, again, we've had this discussion in the past, but how will we make sure that some of our seasonal hard times are also seen some of the gains? And I know we're sort of piecemeal increasing those. For example, uh, we're having trouble keeping on, uh, lifeguards. It's important that we have lifeguards and so it was like, okay, we're gonna raise this by a few dollars. But all those positions I would like to see making a little bit higher level reach. And maybe it's not next year, but maybe we start implementing a three-year or a two-year strategy to get us to a point where we can say, even if you're seasonal or hard time, you still deserve to be making a certain amount. Uh, so I'd like us to have that conversation.
That's, that's a good, uh, policy comment or suggestion. You know, some, yes, we're talking about fair and equitable wages to do that, to make sure that the seasonals are prepared as well. Got it, thanks. Jill?
I guess I wanna, you know, bring up the topic of, you know, how we can support neighborhood associations more. And it seems like with a small amount of operating assistance for a neighborhood association, they might be able to save a lot of staff time in community development, um, or at least some headaches that come from, from lack of communication or not having the right contact information for neighborhood leaders and things like that. So I think just, I think, you know, the request from the third ward neighborhood association is two hundred dollars a year for each neighborhood association. And I'm not sure exactly how many we have, and we almost have a new one every month, but, um, it's one of those things that, that I think we can save money in the long run and also really build community engagement and have it be done by volunteers. And, and making sure that they have some basic resources to put out on newsletter or community newsletters.
Thanks, um, I'm hoping that to be a really for a work responsibility, but she emailed me some comments, and obviously you guys would just like to share those. Um, so her, um, request for the operating budget is, of course, is she'd like, um, if we could prepare budget information to include service level gaps and opportunities similar to the format used last year. Um, and she said that information would be helpful in the event the community decides to go to a referendum. Um, and then the, the second, the second and third comments that she has are relevant to the, to the budget calendar. That's on the last page of our, um, of our presentation. Um, she would like to plan a public comment period or listening session for the budget two weeks before we vote on the budget. So she imagines this will be like a Monday night meeting where this is on the agenda. And so there's time for public comment kind of well before we vote on the budget. And then also, um, to plan a council work session for perhaps one or two days after the public comment period or listening session on the budget. And the council can work as a body to assemble the amendments desired and give consensus to the city manager to include amendments in the final council packet that the budget will be considered. And the rationale is, the goal is to help reduce the perception of last minute adjustments and allow council more meaningful time to really work through amendments and better know what to expect. Um, and she suggests using doodles to sort of pre-schedule meetings, because it probably won't be possible to land it on the, like a Tuesday or something like that. Um, she also, she also wants to share that she's worked, in the early stages of working with the city manager, to advance that idea to gather citizens' input to help shape discussion and parameters of how the city as an organization addresses poverty with the possibility of providing participation stipend from the city council budget. Um, and she would, says she would very much like this to be collaborative and feel like a win-win for administration and council.
So, um, to, Patrick explained about the, um, the carrying over the, for the, um, actual meeting. I really like that idea and actually might, um, request that we consider, not in relation to the vote, but in relation to the deadline for a referendum mainly, so that we can hear public input, um, or, sorry, not referendum, uh, amendments, yeah. Cause I'm like, that's, um, not with you. So that we can, so that we can hear input before we submit our amendments.
Yeah. Joy, the idea that there's public comment, amendments, and then public comment again on the amendments? Because, because if you, if it's, if you have public comment and then draft amendments that go to voting, people don't have an opportunity to comment on the amendments. So I mean, is there?
And there are problems with two public comments, maybe?
This is your process, so.
It's just, it's just time, it's just time, because.
It's the biggest decision we make, so I would say.
Yeah, November eleventh, November eleventh and twelve, um, you know, we could push, we could push the, the official public hearing, um, and, and the adoption of the bu, the budget, we could, you know, we could push it back two weeks. But remember what happened last year with the amendments? I was running out of the room madly trying to change resolutions and everything else to get the, the revised resolutions, um, to you, uh, before you adopt the levy. We've got to adopt the levy. The November twenty-sixth date is not a, is not a negotiable, uh, day, date.
What, what if we had, uh, we keep this November eleven, November twelve, and then back it up to our council, second council meeting in October? We provide an opportunity at that meeting, the, the Monday and toward the end of October, to have a public comment period that's specific on the budget. And then we use our twenty-ninth October session to do amendments. October twenty-ninth work session. Is, we turn that into our.
And then are, are you thinking that the public hearing on the eleventh would send you the opportunity for people to comment on the, on the amendments?
Yeah.
Is it twenty?
Yeah, the twenty ninth, no, the twen, I don't know, the twenty ninth. That's not the Tuesday of our meeting, though.
Yeah, the twenty, I think the twenty-second is probably.
Yeah, so what I think, we would hold a twenty-first, uh, public hearing, and then we could use a, we could use, well, we could even use the twenty-second work session as a, or just for a budget. But I think we could do it at our prior council meeting, receive the input, and then either one of those, twenty-second or twenty-ninth, use that as the work session for amendments.
Um, and again, I, I haven't talked to Councilmember Manuel specifically about this, but I think that, my sense was that we were wanting to have public comment on the amendments before November eleven, because really that's, that would be the same process we've been using now. Because they've gone, they've become public the week before and then the public can comment on them then. And then you adopt the next day and that doesn't, I think that's not feeling like it's really an opportunity.
No, I think, I think the, I think having talked to her, that her intent is that public comment helps us formulate amendments. So it was kind of a, uh, prior to, that there's actually some input from the public in a, in a more serious, I mean, public comes to the meeting, but that that then leads to us saying, oh, we heard from this group of folks, we should consider amendment. And then there would still be something pri, after that.
Okay.
At the council, you know, like we don't want to do. That was my impression of it.
Will, will the budget be ready by the twenty, twenty-second?
Yeah.
Well, if the manager's recommended budget, you'll receive on the fourth, October fourth.
And then, and then we'll be providing information and informing you about it on the eighth and the fifteenth. So.
So that the twenty-second and the eleven?
So what I'm hearing is that on the twenty.
Twenty-first.
First, you are looking for a public hearing basically on the, you know, on, on the manager's budget. You know, I, um, I guess we'd still just have the regular work session, which is more information and learning on the twenty-second. Um, somewhere, somewhere, somewhere then between the twenty-first and the eleventh is the deadline for amendments. Because then there would be a public hearing again on the eleventh, which is for overall budget, but it would also include amendments. So probably then, gee, does that mean? Because it's very beneficial for us to have some time to work with the amendments and of course get them worked up and everything and, and, um, and then be able to publish them before the eleventh, so. And that might be like the fifth, the sixth, the fourth, the sixth, and then like that, sure, if we want amendments to. That would be the public hearing, like we do the first. So if we had the public hearing on the budget, uh, October.
It could be first thing on the, it could be first thing on the fourth, not, you know. Cause, cause then, you know, some of these are taking longer to work on, and we can even distribute, pack it on the, on the seventh, on the seventh. Actually, I'd really like long, on the first, by the end of the day on the first.
You're saying requests for amendments or completed amendments?
Request, well.
Well, do we finish?
Yeah, I mean, the request so that I can turn it into the amendment and get it back to you for, that, so we can start that process then.
Okay. So that would give you a week from the public hearing to?
That'd be two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Is that what you have in mind? Okay? Okay? So we'll revise that calendar, um, and, and get that out to.
And that, and then that would mean that the twenty-ninth is kind of a work session on the amendments?
Uh, well, as a work session, I guess we could, we can see where that, where that takes us, because I suppose if they're due on the fur, they do the next day then, right?
Uh, that's a Tuesday, so Friday.
October's got thirty-one. So, um.
Well, indeed.
Yeah. Well, you know, I mean, the, the discussion about what we intended to do for amendments.
The twenty, the twenty-second doesn't have to be a discussion on amendments, just because it's the day after the public discussion. I mean, we might still be going through it, so, so really the twenty-ninth becomes maybe that amendment discussion.
Like you did last year, where you had kind of some, you know, hey, here's some of the things you're thinking about. But at that point, hopefully you've been thinking about it and you'll be incorporating feedback you heard on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Anything else? Anybody's got? Yes, Jill?
Just as a policy, I mean, long-term, to try to invest in more, that we talked about as a council, um, in the past, is just the general, you know, like transportation access and affordability, um, you know, the, trying to find a way to, to have targeted reductions in bus fares. Um, for, for, we talked about K through twelve kids, we talked about, um, people who are experiencing low income. Um, there's, um, so, so those are some areas that I'm still interested in, in finding, um, somewhere over there for. Um, and, you know, something that's on the, on the, um, work plan for the bicycle pedestrian advisory community is, is the idea of, of a mobility coordinator position that is focused on, you know, the education and outreach and, um, marketing of different modes of transportation, um, and biking and walking and transit. Cause I think having a point person that can really bring some things together to, to increase some of the mode shared toward transit and for bike and walking and maybe reduce some of our need to invest in, in downtown parking, which comes to my, my area. Maybe we could save some money on parking downtown. Um, and it's more in the capital budget, I understand, but, um, you know, if, if you can see any way to reduce expenses for parking and operating budget, that would be appreciated too. I think the less you build, the less you have to staff and maintain and things like that. That whole, that theme of transportation access and affordability is kind of, is the core, is the main point I wanted to get across. And, cause I think it ultimately saves money for, for the city and for residents. Um, and it really increases, you know, people are not old enough, people are, don't have pretty much money, or maybe they don't have the ability to drive, and you can make sure we get as much as you can to help folks. Also, I think it has a big environmental implication, of course, in how our, our programming evolves.
All right, I have one more thing, but, yeah, but I'll let anyone else go first if they do want to. Um, just that, I, I do think, and maybe this will be in the form of, of an amendment, but, but just some feedback is that I want to make sure that we are, uh, investing the appropriate or adequate amounts to support our goal on affordable housing. Um, and I don't have any idea what that could look like or what that would be, but I do know that we just went through a budget process where we sort of figured out some different ways, um, to do it, and I expect that, you know, that'll be a part of our conversation going forward, especially considering how high of a priority it is in our strategic plan too, so, just wanted to make that.
Anything else? Okay. Last chance. Well, then I appreciate the ideas and the feedback here, um, and I know we're all aware and perhaps painfully aware that, uh, you know, the environment we're in certainly asked for the consideration, and, and these are, these are good ideas and, and I appreciate them. First, we have to balance almost a million dollar gap between revenues and expenses. It's a fixed amount of dollars, and wherever we add, we have to take away from something else. So that is the, that is the environment, uh, that, you know, we're, we're operating in. Um, but I, I certainly appreciate the input, the feedback, um, and we'll, we will do our best to bring the budget that, uh, that will align with, you know, your, your priorities as well as, um, align with your priorities, which of course includes getting care of just the basics or planning the city itself.
Could I, could I ask, uh, Daniel and Jill, uh, the record in discussion, uh, when, when, when about would that begin? Who, who are interested in pursuing that?
Yeah, well.
That'd be next year.
Yeah, it would, it would be, but it sounds like, um, you mentioned from, uh, Catherine, that, you know, some of the, uh, you know, some of the discussions about service level gaps, some of the service modifications that I'm reasonably certain that we're going to be getting from department directors, I guess they'll start helping forming, um, that, that discussion on what those gaps are. But, you know, in terms of actually starting the process, um, you know, I think very early next, next year, very early in twenty twenty would be when you would want to start, um, having those discussions and, you know, deciding what that might look like and then figuring out what sort of, what sort of process, uh, that you're gonna go through before the election that, that would be, uh, on ballot in, in November, November.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call seven one five eight three nine four nine one two or TDD seven one five eight three nine one six eight nine. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write, Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.